Great, are we all muted?
Yes, we are.
Oh, there. Thanks, person. Okay, it is EM and I'd like to call the Assistant Mother Twenty-Fifth Eastland Board of Ed regular meeting order. Those of you who can stand, stand and reply. There are a couple of comments, any public comment? Any public comment? Okay. Public comment, we have some minutes to improve. Do you have any changes on operations? Other discussion changes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, say.
Person.
Need to go through, so now we go to the first edition of our student representatives. So, the welcome back to the theater and Daylin Paltrow. Uh, Daylin, maybe when you go, maybe introduce yourselves, because you're going to give an update on anything. What you did, what you did over the summer or anything, uh, you're involved.
Yeah, so, over the summer, I just want to go ahead and be. Our work. So, um, my summer, I was staying, nothing out there, with my family, so, did you guys have fun? Yep. She said, okay, it's all about fun, age, age.
And Daylin, you're a junior. Great, welcome for the board event, we, we too, well, we told your opinions on stuff. It's not only your updates, but if you're all, just appreciate that times against the clock, and so, appreciate it.
Yeah, so, I just talked, not much, talking this week, so, it doesn't feel like a month, but, there's been new events. So, first off, this year, we're going for that one, so, it's the first year, and then for this year, we're pretty successful. We ate and we had a lot of games, like on the beach, and on the grass, it was very fun, we responded, we backed the back. And then during that, we did a lottery for the senior hot parking spots, so, exactly sixty-five people signed up, which is the number of spots we has, it's perfect, everyone got a spot. And there were multiple days of games, just now, all sorts of games. Um, senior prom is maybe within the scenario, very far away, but, tickets should be significantly cheaper to do, uh, submit their amount, I mean, send up right now. And then today, we decided, not fully decided to design, but, decide for senior shirts, and that is going to have a name, it's a moment, and then it's being white. Uh, spirit week is going to be October twenty-third, fifth of May. And the commons decorating theme has decided to be major world cities, so, seniors have LA slash Hollywood. Juniors have New York City, sophomores have Paris, and freshman and vice-Italy. The cause for cause day is going to be Maui, wildfire, and the color has decided yet. But there was one proposal that the center asked me, and it was from one one-way during spirit week. It'll be asked that every year, but, you know, they have to go back to one one-way, or just go to spirit week. Um, I know one thing that they were saying was that, question here for us seniors, and it's like, in the cohorts, they're like, something up for that, this is a whole question. So, the council is just going into English class to pursue their to speak, like these moments, and everything, so, we all heard all the applications into that phase. And people are pretty stressed about that, but, you know, hopefully it's all well with everybody. Just to extend my, I heard so far, it's October fifteenth, which is very soon. And then for other reports, Sid Arco, you see, we learned one, not Kyo, but Jari came, where the semi-finalists, which makes it for National Mayor Scholarship. And the grown students in that program, we make convergence, have on medical trend, and looking for coming up. This is the happy week, the boy is happy week, so, they take a much honor, and girls really do the best, but, we're still there, so, that's exciting. Um, that school night was on September seventh, I didn't hear much about that, I feel like not that many parents of seniors though, just maybe this is one year, but. Senior college application night was the fifteenth, um, I know sports and some other events were going on at that time, so, I don't know what if we were in the library, so I'm going to go. So, I don't know much, but, um, school photos are tomorrow, and the day after, during English classes. And on that note, senior papers are due November first, so I know more students are paying for senior papers second. Um, the triad induction round will be held in the on-ten on Wednesday. For seniors, another thing for college, there's a workshop to University of Daylin for college fair on October fourth, to let me release the admissions list for that, for anyone that's interested. On October eighteenth, juniors will be taking the PSE team, and at the same time, I know the Spanish Apple exam will also be taking place, not sure about the other. And I know last year, there was an opportunity for seniors to work on the college as a charity workshop, but I haven't heard people about that on the senior, so, to see. Um, the juniors decided that their prom is going to be located at Orange Star, where, I'm, on our gear, so I don't have many details about that. Um, yearbook orders have begun, the pub fair is on October eighth, in New York James, and all the pubs are not going to make their posters, setting up where it stands for that.
Any questions?
From the light report.
Yeah.
I come out to be very comprehensive, over lots of ground and many topics. And just a side note, I'm going to tell her, I said about the, um, back to school night, and they're sitting at the table, and there's three minutes, seniors, and I need to be all. But I, 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 it was, it was not always. Or I see your, I see your.
I see your, I follow your, right. But I know so high teachers, they send them, they talk to them, good on them, or stay with them.
Yeah, I know, I follow a lot of them, but I have some good ones. I know, right? You get a lot of them, you know, because senior fair.
Good question. Thanks so much. You're not going to make people stay the whole time?
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you.
So, moving on to discussion action items for instruction, and as part, as we've talked about, we're having different principals or administrators come in, and different aspects of part of their agendas. And tonight, we have Buddy Kelly giving an update on the middle school, and Kelly giving an update on the high school. Unless you have your, your work in, so.
Good evening, good morning, how are you? Um, what I wanted to share with you this evening is looking at some of the things that align with the board goals. Some of the areas that we've never able to cover so far at this point, with regard to pathway programming. Um, we are going to be working with Mr. Casulo, who is in progress for setting up an upcoming meeting where several district principals will be meeting. To talk about the electrical racks, and how we won't be able to utilize some of their supports, both the world, so that it's very preliminary, and it's sitting up, made it coming up, down, forward. So that we are really going to, um, looking forward to getting more activation and resource to be able to be aligned in that coming. Um, our counselors are also, every year, we have reps from different tech schools that come in, and present toward grade eight students, and typically gone over in succession of a couple of days, cafeteria. So, we're looking at changing things up a little bit, they're still be coming in, but having all of the reps on one day, having students rotate through most of it up, like the tech fair, so we may very similar to the college fair. Also, we're working with the counselors, and then having that some actually happening early October, so, um, the station, more information, tell us about that. Um, we have started off with regards to the school year, I feel like it's a really great place. Some of the things that really can capture and highlight, um, the culture and climate at Eastland Middle School. We started off, um, back in August, when we had our grade five students come in, wore their, make their orientation, and issue to the new students. Uh, we had orders, um, t-shirts that said, ask me, and had our names on the deck, and we wore those, but the incoming fifth graders, the students know that administrators, counselors, social workers, and area officers, they have to be wearing those on the first day. So, if they were uncertain, or they were sure, unsure of where they were going to go, and they had to come up, they didn't see a face, and they recognized with those brand shirts, to be able to, um, pop for support, so. I think that worked out really well, um, we also had, um, device rollout, that went really, really smooth, so, we made those to our tech department. Um, our students, um, from grade five, uh, incoming fifth graders, have done a wonderful job at the meetings, the building, um, you know, there's a lot of workouts done, looking for our student transition, and we're afraid for. Um, a lot of presentations, a lot of discussions, a lot of content, and they're doing a good job, they are making really well. Um, so, I see them hitting around, running, and walking into their classes, and seeing the game, the teachers, and they've also participated over at grade five. In that one, Pam Gazin, took her take in team leading activities, which really helps, um, students, and to stay out, be able to get to know each other, talk to them, and work together towards building some reputation on the team. So, that's been really exciting, um, I love the connection, the fortitude days, they went. Um, we also administratively, kind of go on through every single one of the team, to the teams in the building, to talk about, and review the guidelines, the expectations. Um, and answer any questions the students may have on the handle, on the hidden board, and bring some of the policies, some standards, and, um, just reviewing, um, up to date things that the students need to be made, um, refreshed about. Um, we also hosted a breakfast, a luncheon for our staff, um, for them at the very beginning of the year, and, um, being kind of fun, um, for breakfast, um, you know, at bright, on your PD day, um, back in September first, so that would stop it nicely. Um, we also hosted our back from school night last Wednesday, it was very nicely, well, well done, attended, um, treating a little bit, so, we had the grade five, sixth parents come. We had a slight kind of an intermission to be able to, we have, um, partying, and a bit of the ability, and a little more flexibility, and then we ran, um, the grade seven, eight, in the same night, in the past, since she's up at night, so. Her family's with you, and, um, and those, and the grade, I was, hated, um, to be that, you know, things, you know, appreciation, and having a tax gap, um, and what's going on, and it. Um, and we also, and I told her one of our cases, the arts coming up as well, so, more information with that, so, um. Um, we are utilizing, um, you know, the training, um, with regards to restored practice, we start our faculty meetings, uh, with that, in terms of touchy base. Um, reflection for our staff, we've been incorporating that large component, regards to circle, and throwing up into the meetings, being people to share, giving staff that opportunity to just share out. Um, same thing with students, we've been highlighting, hopefully, same in regards to some of the diversity, um, in effect, we, um, asking for student volunteers, um, working with our building base team, to have, um, different students, um, unifying news, highlights, some of their, some of their cultural or religious traditions. Um, last week, we had students talk about the Jewish holidays, um, we have some staff members, as well as students that will not, um, that will be sharing out on Hispanic Heritage Month, so we're looking forward to that. We are also, um, going to, looking to have some of our little school students, um, attend and participate, um, at the MLK Martin Luther King Scholarship Dinner. Um, which is a nice event, that's really highlighted for high school students, but the purpose of that is to have a simple, to be able to link families with the resources that are available, scholarships for students in their junior high school. And to just have our students start thinking about, setting a goal, you know, putting a table before them, that's a very touching one, but we think that was fortunate enough, we had that event last year. Um, it just was an amazing night, hearing some students' stories, and families, and, um, wasn't it all, was, was really nice. Um, so, we also have, our mentor program is really off the ground and running very well, to date, uh, we have ten peers, we have mentors, and identified ten students. And those are students from grades six, seven, and eight, so we have ten pairs that are currently running, with three additional mentors that are waiting to be paired up with students in the building as well. Um, our counseling area, we have reconfigured, so we now have our school counselors in what we call the council suite, where they're all located in one area. They also have, um, they're running more groups, and some of which include, um, that is up and running, or will be coming, super base support base, study school group, and they currently are running, um, student groups for new students as well. So, that is up and running, those are all usually on the period of five to eight. Lots of clubs going, so they can listen to the rest of the country, they just have already been doing science, and we're working really hard on, um, trying to be able to. Highlighting and sending things to staff members, and a little appreciation and recognize, and supporting the things that we've done throughout the year, our coaches, administratively, and learning, and for my industry, the team, and to English, and to anyone who's been in the much, the staff members, and of course, we will, darn, thank them for something that was seen up, and you know, beyond, so. Working hard on doing that. With regards to instructional practices, we have had our coaches, and some of our staff members from our team leader, as well as, um, breaking fellows, that have presented on explicit instruction. The, what the learning blocks that I have been on with the superintendent, it's the superintendent, I'll give you example by a really great concern happening in the classroom. We have seen the learning outcomes that are posted, we see, uh, different portions of what's been suggested, the present in the classroom, so, it's kind of the parts highlighting of how we're going to have, we need the learning outcomes. So, lots of really great things, and, um, our coaches and our staff are really great job, um, it's a fair name, and we come here, and we staff as well, and see, very lucky scene. Um, another exciting thing coming up, fingers crossed, uh, we have a five or a math brand, which, uh, we will hopefully hear by October first, of whether or not we can be a recipient of that. And that is about the tutors that will come in and support students, um, with regards to grade level work. So, that will be a huge help, especially with our tier support instructions in the classroom, so, again, fingers crossed, that that goes through, uh, we said that would help with our, our work in terms of trying to be able to boost our, um, poster, and boost our mass source. Our learning lab is on multiple swing, and that is, um, we kind of renamed that from Flex, that is where tier two support is happening in the classroom. That is being run by our general ed teachers, and right now, we've supported the grade five by our coaches, help with science and social studies, make sure our assistants will bring, um, support for the area of exam, and making it, and charts. Our teachers love this, we now have rolled out a technology called Dino, which helps them to be able to, uh, monitor the engagement in what students are doing or not doing in the classroom setting, and making sure that they're focused, and it's a great way, they monitor the work, so, well, send messages, and might be just a reminder, you stay on time, for a while, you're doing a great job. So, that, that's been a really big score, I think, for, um, for the support teachers, including what you left on for. As you recollect, as you hopefully recollect, like the presentation we did last year on the grade five schedule, we increased time in math, in English, language arts, in sixty minutes, so that has gone well, again, our coaches have been really instrumental in regards to helping some of the teachers facilitate, and. Um, making sure that the explicit instruction concept is being carried over during that time, so that has been a smooth transition this year as well. And then we are also, um, our grade five, English, language arts teachers, um, are, um, utilizing the magic learning, which is a reading pilot, that we, we do a work with, and feel able to, it's, um. So, that is something that there's been a lot of time working really hard on. Since the feedback has been updating, like the program, and there is a plethora of information about trying to be able to work with the coaches to streamline what they knew is most relevant, um, in the sixty minute timeframe, to give support to students, and, 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 and. Lastly, with regards to branding and social media, uh, Mr. Anderson, I can't take credit, because I am not texting out his release, but he's done a phenomenal job with regards to keeping up to date with our Facebook and Instagram posts. Some of the things, if you followed us, include, uh, teachers going over behavior expectations, put in different above position, whether it's box or in the cafeteria. Um, staff during PD day, engagement, and questions, um, we've also put in there reminders with regards to yearbook, the number of library books checked out today, uh, pictures of different staff, our administrative assistants, so family knows who they are. Um, we also posted, we received from our ETA, um, update with our eleven, twelve, uh, athletes, um, they were Little League state champs, so they're in the picture, they know, poster, and they actually just were on. Benway Field last Friday, they've also recognized more than the number of charitable, uh, contributions that they're, so, they're, so they're writing in Benway.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Question? I know you, you just put a lot out there, but I, I don't understand the Dino, is it?
Thank you. Oh, um, Phil, you might know it as Shirley, maybe, in my life, no? It's, um, it is a monitoring system for teachers, so if I'm a teacher in a classroom, my students might have their laptop up, and I can see what's on their screen, from my, from my own device. So, I can monitor what they are accessing over the course of the, um, class period, I could also sort of whitelist the only things kids can act, could, kids can access while they're in my class. So, if I know there's only three websites they need to get to during my classroom, I push, I tell Dino, I only want them to be able to access these three websites during the period of my class, and those are the only three websites they can access. But it also has a messaging system, so, I could be providing feedback to someone, I really like the way you're diving deep into the content that you're reading, or, hey, it looks like you might need to get back on task, you know, um, so, definitely. So, uh, that's, it's a, a software platform, though, to keep that, to monitor. I think it's helped by that, some of that, um, just, uh, in time, it may make the class, because it's, you know, in classrooms, but, and, 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 all the time, so, it allows, I mean, more of the control of the bonus for how much we should, in the class.
So, we can log on, and have to log in through that?
Nope, it's automatically on their computers, so, it runs through ClassLink in our rostering, um.
Could it change a lot in, in any other's areas?
Well, you know. So, uh, it's pretty locked down, it's pretty locked down.
They try, they try.
They, I'm sure they try, but, you know, it does help with, um, a little games that they might be up and running, that have all the little backways to get in, and, you know, they have their proxies, and. Um, so it helps to shut down and monitor those, and so that kids are focused in the last, um, um, which also means, do they know they're being monitored? Uh, they do not, um, but they could, in terms of the, the, um, teacher could actually have a platform up on their clear touchboard, so that everybody, every kid's screen is up, but. Um, as a part of our acceptable use policy, um, you know, it goes devices are our devices, and we have the right to monitor their use, so, so. We'll know quickly. So, you find, you're finding it pretty impressive, very much. Yeah, very, very, yes, most districts use platforms like this, and we were kind of, um, you know. I, 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 for whatever reason, they didn't really necessarily, um, look into it until last year, and, uh. They had a tight cohort of people private last year, and they found it really, really beneficial, so. It was, uh, really very cost-effective and, um, no-brainer to the, to me, but the teacher still walks around the room. Oh, yeah, yeah, this.
I'm just going to spoil you.
Oh, yeah. Scary of that.
No, no, okay. It's just, and maybe that a kid doesn't pull up their laptop, you know, depending on what the learning intention is for that, that day, but, um. It's just, it just helps to monitor, they use a good computer as well, or in class.
I'm assuming it starts with, like, squirrel moments. Squirrel, like, the, you know. You go off to that picture, where you set your eyes on that, or.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. And one of the first, yeah, so I guess my only concern is, and again, I think it's marvelous now, I understand what you're feeling with it, but don't you need to develop autonomy, and you're acting, I'm just thinking, high school students and college students, and adults, so. We need to, and that is, uh, we don't worry, so unless they're in high school. We're not monitoring where they're going, what they're doing. No, no, it's in high school, too, yeah.
It's the, it's just that, it's that you point for seven.
Uh, okay, okay.
And there's certain times, I mean, there's still autonomy, and if they're, that's, or, and you've got the grades. It's more. As soon as research has aligned.
And as kids get older and more developed, it's more developmentally appropriate to have the autonomy, you know, that release of responsibility um, is there. Um, and however, there may be some schemes in whatever, for whatever reason, in a certain class period, may need a little bit more structure than a different group, and so. A teacher can differentiate it for them. Yeah, it's, it's not a blanket program that we apply across all kids, a teacher can choose at any given moment of time what's allowed and what's not, very good. And and to add to that, I've seen a lot of teachers give from the right feedback to students, they continue to circulate. But also they know that something, maybe you have a child or student who has a hard time seeing clearly, and that's why we're doing a great job, I really like what we're seeing, we've got the great work and we have to.
I have a um, a lower ten question, but I think um, I heard you mention, and thank you for. The very comprehensive as well, um, it kind of gave a nice sort of lens into a lot of different aspects and areas, um. And thank you for you talk about the reviews um, around the um, handbooks or policies.
Yes.
And by no means is there an expectation from the user now, but um. I am wondering if there were certain themes of kind of questioning or things that came up that. More kids asked about or teachers asked about or things that were maybe being enforced or.
If you think about it, you know, at the level, you know, the younger students. I've given a similar explanation without getting into heavier words, whatever, and then look up. Explain the terms, that's not a lighter level, um, we try to highlight the standing points. Again, on the lighter level, for the grades five, pressure five, you know, six, seven, eight. We're giving them the examples, you know, with regard to the student discipline, with regard to attendance, with regard to disciplinary um, expectations. Um, you know, resources that are in the building, um, bus protocol, so we try to kind of capture the. And the larger scale areas um, of relevance that are relevant. Um, we also um, have incorporate, have initial counselors up with us so that they can see the help they're to support them being. And let them know that um, they are here for the association and the mission question.
I had a few questions, so no, no, I, sorry, can I, I I have some real basic questions, can you just remind us? How many KIVAs we currently have, are they all single grade, approximately, and the students we have in each, um? Are there any three teacher KIVAs anymore or they all, or can you just?
Sure, absolutely, right now, I've only got eighteen. And uh, there are two grade levels in each team, so two fifth, two sixth, two thousand and eight. They're all the teacher compromised, the four content area teachers, math, science, social studies, language arts, and then special education. Um, there are no three grade.
And then, um. Are we, and this is very basic, but in terms of classes are still going around the back?
No, classes run off in front, they have for a while, so this way that helps. We changed the flow a little bit of students in the morning, so it was divided basically, we now shift them to a right in the cafeteria. So that they can access the cafeteria, get the breakfast if they wanted, and then head off to class. And so we have some of the students going in that way, and then some of the students anywhere they are, walk on, even very vibrant nurses. Hallway without wings as well, parent drop on, they come to the bathroom. Um, so we have addressed that, um, we did a video. Last week, some letters the week before, just to help remind the campus of the flow over there, because sometimes there is heavy congestion and then those. Overspilled, so we make sure that they're coming down in two ways and emerging into the water, um, so.
Great, last question, imagine how. Coaches, I just, we added a math coach.
Yes, that's the. She's been with us for one year.
One year, and how, how, is she the only math coach?
She's our only math coach.
And how is that going?
She's, she's a rock star, she is phenomenal, she has worked in communication with our literacy coach in Huggington, I mean, for the construction. She also works very closely uh, with systems. We also did a math grant, recognizing that this was an area of weakness. And solicited an approach to the, hey, listen to this, and get this grant that we would be comfortable, um. She's well respected, she was trusted by her people, she worked as a math teacher in the building on grade eighteen. Um, and she was done, but I'm a child, I think.
Great, and then does she get involved with, with the transition that they?
She does, she worked in conjunction with the coaches, that, that coaches down in, you know, the tree level, so they meet. At the end of the year, prior to them coming up, receiving data, receiving assessments. There's communication, they are having meetings during the course of the year, they bring all the coaches together, so they are sharing information, and many of them are. Lot of communication, a lot of. She's, she's a great thing for um, helping us with the position, but it's been lost without. She also did a lot of research on different math programs once uh, here, uh, you know, prior resources uh, for math, we're part of our. Fifth grade math goals, and uh, is supporting the implementation of the new math curriculum in the uh, class six this year, so. Yeah, so she's uh. She's been. Yeah, yeah.
Great.
Suspect to see good things coming out of the math department at the local school this year.
Great.
Thank you for your back to back.
Hey, everyone. Dave and here already did a really good job. We're hearing some of the same things, um, high school, I think it's off to a great start this year. Uh, we opened the school year um, during vacation with teachers. With a building-wide lunching, and then we also did a public breakfast. Um, enjoyed by everyone, and then to do a first Friday. Breakfast, but we've been making it more in line with PD days, and then we, you know, we're literally in the breakfast together and then move on. I made a break for everybody, um. We met at the beginning of the year, the students by grade level to welcome me back and set some consistent expectations for the behavior. It's the first year and this is in a long time, we've got the same schedule, we're having passed the structure of the day and talked a little bit more about. Um, what, what we expect for the behavior during school day, and a lot of focus for us, um, was on cell phones and bathrooms. Those are two areas for us that we've been working on as we're sure kids are paying attention in class and also not uh, vandalizing the bathroom. Um, we welcomed Tom Barano in a very cordial, well-received uh, emotion into art presentation and rare work on getting those students to be nice. Uh, brave by our new to get person, they're fun up. And um, we do continue to look at the daily schedule and our teacher meetings to make sure that in the post-show world, the way the students have the opportunities to connect with teachers and meet the flex of organizations as possible. That's been what we're going to be continuing to learn for next year's to be working. Uh, that is not the first that I've heard about a request for one lunch during spirit league, um, you see, in the machines, and one lunch or we have a home room. Maybe it's all about pictures, I want to be able to picture together. So maybe that's home room, maybe this, we still don't have a room in the cafeteria, very good, so. Uh, we do have a pub fair scheduled coming up for next week, um, for everyone, but especially for new students to find or join the club. As usual, this year we had a lot of the same clubs and we have new clubs, um, that all actually, many of them started uh. Pulling their act together a little bit last year, so I'm looking forward to having some new things happening too. Um, we've also been working to reopen the Viking Vault, which has been, uh, I think, kind of exciting for a lot of students, they started the year off. By doing a little bit of a um, sale, so a lot of people really did any like some good like in the year that they wanted to see with a reduced price. Uh, and in addition to a wonderful back to school night, we've had two successful parent lights so far, posted by our council office, one for our nine-grade new students, a very meaningful year. College transition, and one of our seniors that are going through the college application process, um, and in the first, for the first time in over a decade. He was on Viking and goes to a very successful division and then competition, um. But he was well attended, and I was very wide with that, I think that way you call it a new event, you know, and kudos to, um, that's the game. Anybody with that. Um, and our CIL six thirty, we were with Narsi to look at our program studies with faculty lens, since work that we're going to be doing probably over the next three years. But started back in today when our. Um, our teachers had two modules, a professional built around intentional planning and specific instruction, and they have also been training on Dino. And I can give you an example, I saw, we actually saw a teacher um, who was using it. To allow the kids to use their laptops on essay and exam, but he was able to monitor that they were only testing and not. Bringing other things, and would be exotic, you know, to have. So, uh, it's definitely, we just did the training, so it's a little bit slower introduction to the high school with the teachers that are used that. Um, are. Um, this coming Wednesday, our NTSS team and I will be presenting to the faculty about our NTSS services and referrals, um, this year. We've been sort of by teacher overseeing the executive functioning aspect of um, NTSS. Um, which is providing our literacy and math supporters more time opportunities, I think students tend to also work on their data collection, they are very, very happy to do things going each year. Uh, and I can, um, we moved one of the uh, literacy people into a position, a CIL position, and that has been really wonderful for that group there, they, I think. Are we finally able to do what they wanted me to do last year? Um, that's very exciting for us, um, we're also working right now on providing an additional quiet study opportunities for students. Specifically, our classrooms are not structured study hall, like, you know, like, the promise is maybe not the best place for that study. And we're also looking um, to provide some additional space for students. Um, so as you know, we moved to post students and staff in the high school. And we're transitioning and integrating with students and the program, um, the Learning Through Names program is holding now in L U all these summer students. We have two students that are recently accepted into L T I internships that have planned for student program, which is tied with our whole privilege of the. Presentation classes, and we have one student from L T I who's now serving at a state like the H V apprenticeship. Um, those are all students that we're not going to. Um, students will receive credit and work on what you're doing on their um, transfers. Pathways is received, play a bit of grant money, um, a dual credit grant of forty-nine thousand dollars in September to help one of the new, two new English dual credit refund classes. And we have two dual credit refund class, and they also got grant funding to help um, continue to support our program against support. For two building and apprentice, um, which will support the. They're doing a two building and friendship program at the support, and it's, they're, um, gave a very, but they're a few of the minor program students that. Which is fantastic for them, and anyways, both social, emotional, and educational. Um, and then we have um, two new half whose experience is starting in the summer of October. Camp net, cybersecurity, and known for very critical maintenance. And a new collaboration with the electric boat for an ice channel starting in April, for as my high students coming will be called the transcenter in Pot and Westerly. And we have new collaborations also planned with turn inscription, radio inscription, and solace. And a group of students are going off to manufacturing, we are exposed, it's kind of. Um, we're also continuing the collaboration with foreign test where any of this garage, so path is definitely been super good. Um, and again, having Dave and um, and probably the building is something that. I just read more students on knowing that that's been happening. Plus, Dave is really good at all of that publicity about that. Um, and along those lines, we continue to get really positive feedback about the new release letter. This morning, on Friday, here, it's an honor to be able to admit a new release letter. Um, and as you know, it contains a lot of important announcements, it's got information about events, fundraising, community events, well, school events, and also trying to showcase what's happening in our classroom to our student accomplishments. Um, we've had a Facebook page since twenty seventeen, so I think we've been breaking up, we're wanting to play followers, we've gained some hundred. Um, and we continue to use that platform to share information, and everyone knows that Mark, who is also doing a great job. Um, which I just realized, and I haven't shared his athletic post yet to the Facebook page, but you know, I have been back and forth making sure that we're getting as much information as possible from the two of us. Um, David Fizumo has had a community response on to the channel three, which we've also shared out through, um. Through our social media, um, and I want to end by sharing a conversation that I had with teachers last week that I just, it was a Friday and it left me. Feeling really good about this school year, I asked them, how are things going, and one of them responded that she actually likes her job again. The past few years, we've been really talking, it's really nice to hear about that, they're not just here because it was, you hear, because it happened to be, but she really likes it. So that was really good.
I have a few, heck, that's okay, I'm gonna go, um, pathways is just, uh, it's, it's just so great to hear, and one thing is, can you leave a list? Or keep a running list for somewhere, all the different programs that you just.
Wow, a lot of it.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I mean, it's so impressive, and it's, yeah, I think even more impressive, but I can actually see it, um, what you're doing, this, uh, that is. Phenomenal, and then also the chat base, have we thought, I know, I know it's growing, they're just getting ninth graders, but have we thought about? For seventh and eighth, or let's say eighth graders, and maybe seventh, like doing a presentation to them and their parents, I don't know what forum, the forum that would be in, but. So they know when they're coming in, hey, we have this thing that we're developing, um, that they might be adventurous.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Um, I'm thinking do a presentation to the eighth grade, along with all the other options, other school options, but we should have some more information about topics, not the.
That is next month, it's in mid-October. Yeah, and then the Electric Boat um, presentation that Dave has that we're in process of setting up in October, it is um, that's run facilitated by Electric Boat, and that is kind of geared toward. Wedding the appetite of some of the middle-aged, school-aged students. So we're also at that meeting looking at incorporating, might be, we might be able to fold it into the curriculum on um, in our tech ed department, so both of our tech ed teachers who also made attendance at that meeting too. Seeing the takeaways and the materials and how they might be able to incorporate it.
Great.
Yeah, Dave is wish I were to try to make sure, if you fill it, and each and we, my head is just sending in a slop of things.
Related to what you just said, um, that's great, uh, pathways, um, for, uh, I think. Now, all this sort of non-traditional around sort of. Um, I was thinking also on the lens of communication, and I wonder if, um. I would love to hear from some of the students who are experiencing these, apparently people like to come share here, but I was also thinking about. What you said, right, so there are presentations that um, could be helpful, but also have the student force share.
Our first student-led presentation coming up next, um, that might be a nice one. That's funny, yeah, yeah. You always want to hear, want to hear from depth, and you want to hear from kids that are, that step as well. Question? I have, yeah, yeah, more of a request. I think you ended on a perfect note, my request is can we get that person enjoying our culture and climate, and then we get him or her to bring a friend. That's exactly what I mean, somebody who likes coming with.
Hey, thanks, Dave. Hey, I.
Yeah, yeah, please.
So I've, I've had the honor, actually, of being used by one of our friends, he's been running one. And you may have noticed over the last year, he hasn't been mentioned many times in our. Um, he went to National American Scholar semifinalists, he also competes on our swim team, plays saxophone in our concert band. He was captain of the team that went to the National Science Bowl competition, followed by to compete in the USA Math Olympia, and he represented in the USA, then we became Olympia. He's here tonight to tell you a little bit about his experience, sorry.
Alright, good evening, good evening, um. Thanks for having me, so as you know, uh, I was selected to represent the United States at the International Chemistry Olympia this year, so. I should start by explaining what that actually is, so. Uh, we made it at the ITO, it is one of a number of Olympia-type competitions. Which are held in a variety of subjects, such as like physics, math, and chemistry, and the Chemistry Olympia specifically. Was started in nineteen sixty-eight, so it's been over fifty years and. Uh, now there are almost ninety countries participating, and three hundred forty-eight students are present at this year's Olympia. Um, that is, each country sends a team of four representatives, so I was one of the four high school students selected for the United States. So, to start with, uh, my personal journey up to this level, uh, the US selection process involves, um. First, a logo test, and then a national exam, uh, after which the top twenty students are selected for a study camp. From which the top four is selected for the team, so I went to this camp. Uh, once in freshman year, then when I returned in sophomore year, I was selected as the second alternate to the team. And then, of course, this year I was finally selected as a member of the team, and. You know, the previous two years definitely motivated me to study really hard because, of course, it is a very difficult. Uh, accomplishment to rank in the top four in the entire country. So. Um, but getting to the actual Chemistry Olympia, so this year it was held in Switzerland at ETH in Zurich. And. Uh, so leading up to that experience. We spent a lot of time studying, obviously, but. For me, the main draw of this Olympia was, you know, not just competing with others to get medals, but rather. The collaboration between teammates and being able to meet all these different people from different countries. There were also a lot of activities, uh, which were intended to expose us to, you know, the real world of chemistry, which is not just, uh, obviously, it's not just. Uh, solving questions on a test paper in front of you, so. Uh, we were very happy to uh, meet all the other teams, in particular, the United States team, we quickly made friends uh, with the UK team. As well as the Ukrainian team, who we were sharing rooms with, and. Uh, we also had a orgite, and you know, everyone was very nice, and. Uh, thankfully, most people shared the same mindset as me, so. We were all very happy just to be meeting each other and being exposed to each other's culture, there was in fact. Um, they kind of informal gift exchange, so, uh, the US team, we brought a couple hundred of these bowls. To the Olympia, and we traded these with other teams, and, you know, I have a lot of souvenirs, which unfortunately I cannot bring today, but, um. You know, other teams were very happy to receive these. So. Uh, yeah, this, uh, the city of Zurich was very nice for, I think, all of us. Uh, you know, we were very awestruck at a lot of things, including. Um, you know, the prices of chocolate, because it's part of Switzerland, I unfortunately also don't have any chocolate. It's been a while. Um. Right, other activities planned, uh, were not just, uh, well, there were a lot of activities planned, uh. uh, including visiting the Paul Scherer Institute, which is a particle accelerator in Switzerland. And that was incredible to see, you know, very big facility, lots of wires. And we were also, uh, given quarters of the university and shown there with displays from a lot of different chemical companies. So, again, that was all great in exposing students to, you know, what chemistry is like in the real world and how its applications are useful to today's society. Um, and I should, I should, I should probably talk now about the actual exam, which is ostensibly the purpose of Olympia. So the Chemistry Olympia is unique in that it consists of two parts, a one which is, you know, a traditional paper test and the other which is a timed lab practical section. Uh, so this year's exam was, uh, widely regarded as one of the most difficult Chemistry Olympias held in the history of, uh, of this program. But, you know, the problems were extremely well-written and, like I said, since uh, we were less concerned about, you know, just placing high, it was really a lot of fun to work through the creative problems that the committee had written for us. Um, yeah, and then on the final day, uh, was, it was the closing ceremony and they also had a dance. So I placed sixty-ninth out of three hundred forty-eight students and received a silver medal. Uh, it's kind of heavy. I've been told there's some real silver in it. And, uh, the gold medal is shinier. Uh, two of my teammates have one, but unfortunately I don't have that. And, uh, the dance was definitely the highlight for a lot of people. You'll notice I brought with me a tie today. And this tie is painted not in the colors of the United States flag, but of the Slovakian. And, uh, the reason for this is kind of funny. Uh, while the dance was going on, um, you know, a very drunk high schooler came up to me and exchanged ties. So I now have this. And I think it really demonstrates, um, you know, the meaning of different cultures and, uh, all the brilliant experiences we've had. And, uh, so it was about two weeks. Yeah, and, yeah, and before I finish, uh, I want to just thank the people who made it possible. So, uh, my mentors at the study camp, uh, my brilliant teammates, all the people who coordinated, uh, all the activities in Switzerland and of course, this school and Misses Feyer for allowing us to take the US chemistry. That's all I have.
Well, thank you so much. Uh, it's very impressive and we really appreciate, uh, you getting up here and giving us an overview. Are there any questions?
Mine's just funny. I just wanted to verify, was the medal for the dancing or was the medal for the? Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
What did you want to say? I didn't see that one. This is a little.
Like, um, bold.
Yeah, I read it by the man. It'll be kind of random. Oh, I'm a senior.
Yeah, at least where you guys can go on the podium or. Where, where should we go? They're just in front of the podium. No, yeah. Yeah, all right, ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gradually.
One more question. What are your plans for the future?
Right, so I'm one teenager in, uh, Devon, I think, obviously, and I'm looking at chemistry as a choice, but I'm still, uh, partially undecided.
We have one more question, sorry.
I know you're blocking out, but I'm just sort of taking in that really, that presentation was delivered beautifully and it was very humble. And a couple of words just resonated with me, um, and started to catch you on the first round of comments there. But you talked about collaboration, you talked about mindset, you talked about partnership, building those relationships. And I, it's, those are all like the characteristics that are, that are, you know, absolutely spot-on and, you know, kind of your path to success.
As a parent, I want to say, I really appreciate your attention. Thank you to the school, because Kenny, I guess, he started it from the beginning, really, this school district, they, uh, um, educated this point, and also my daughter, I'm very proud of her, but thank you, the school, this really, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a wonderful leader.
Thank you.
That's gonna be a tough act to follow for the next one.
Thanks. Good night.
Medal for score.
So we move on to discussion, information, facilities update, uh,
If it is possible, but you kind of come ahead and you could start about a lot. Um, so just briefly go through some of the latest and greatest facilities in the community. Uh, just today, we released the new bid at five package for the board that will include a contract. So we thought we'd release it in October and this will be right now on, you know, sixteen, four, and twenty-two, to authorize. And, uh, I think, spelled out with a bit package, the instructions and start, uh, as early as a person contract. It hurts to do so because we have a hard stop to have that though on this We have a job opening right now in Solly Shop for a part of my body manager. And surprisingly, exciting, and surprised at the number of candidates we've got, as always, probably so far, so current my intention, there's that process, so at least we can see if they can offer it. And we'll not so move along with that, so that we can be allowed with my place. Uh, next week, we will give more of the town board selected to discuss the MOU for the former dispatch building. The name, but it's especially in our hands. Um, there was a family, uh, I put together basically, we put that with the seed initially, but accounts were going to their attorney. Um, maybe they're back in the training. There are some changes that have, uh, made, which was Maybe see the last note, we got a new tractor. We did order a new truck, we sold that from the first small balls. We had roofs in that building being last week, get a sense of what the real condition is underlying the hybrid. By a stream of water, which is not where it's standing, water. Okay, not supposed to. Um, so, uh, we'll see what that turns out. The conditions, I'm very sure that is because we aren't. That's true, it's a five. So some other hat will connect. Remember those weren't done in the center in the living room, they're momentarily cracked. So, uh, as this year's going along, we added a couple of things onto the C I P, which I'll but the subcommittee now has to, right, the parties will pick how much money you can spend next year because, um, increasingly spending more and more money as the same event. Um, you know, that's terrible. And track, so we very early in project, well, there. Um, that age group has just mentioned, uh, tennis courts, uh, recent, uh, research has been done. Learning a lot about that, so we can ask help. And as mentioned previously, the private center group is going to be a replacement, not next year, than soon as. Couple of open contracts we have right now, uh, the storefront under two system. So we replaced the entryway, the audit firm June last year. Uh, we're just waiting for the new parts coming in, the audit clearing site. So as soon as that's ready to go, that'll be done this fall. That is pretty easy. Instruction didn't really get away, I think, last year. Uh, we did from the school, the society, so as soon as that's ready to go, we'll do that. Uh, we're waiting still for the new rooftop unit, uh, number six for middle school coming in. Uh, we've been having a lot of problems with that unit, most others, like middle school, technically in hot weather. Uh, so I already, I have plans, which will be going out as well this week for uh, next two units there, the number, number three, number thirteen, uh, funds are already available and we just set the allocations for those. So I intend to have those gone early next summer too. Six early, impossible, so I and he's dealing with the worst of what we've had, uh, eating conditions at this school. And, uh, considering looking at some opportunities for energy savings. Recently, and within probably, and is my word, but last webinar on E V and some grants are going to help for E V charging.
I don't, I think, I still sell and
Didn't, uh, so say why. They're out there, have they, so every, um, helping provide things, and they're C I P. Or, or the workers together, C I P, um, troubleshooting some other long-term policies they had. Rely on a contract for the facility names this year. So the challenge is interesting, um, very dominating.
Thanks, Chris. And next topic, discussion and action, the E board recognition works, competition, starting with everybody that's had a chance. As we do each year, um, last number of years, we've received level two recognition from Dave. So, thanks, Barissa, for helping to get our documentation, support, our pace to submit also for level two, beginning this year. Um, we need to make a motion to approve, but I want to make sure everybody's had a chance to look at it and see if there are any questions. And thanks for giving a little input to, um, I appreciate that, that this would be said.
And moving forward and paid for, right, conditions, of course, for the state of the world, as we present. Uh, and lots of money, the bank, money was borrowed in the many family bank.
Hi.
Oppose, saying. And that closes the discussion action. So we'll move on to the official reports.
Yeah, just a couple of items, um, we had, uh, it's, we think, as we said, it's shared some about a calendar, an actual district calendar, so we'll work in that early, so we get it to you earlier. Um, so we have a big draft, uh, done, bringing it to, to our, kind of, P D activities, we'll deal with, um, these, with the committee, get some feedback from them. Um, it's interesting, we can go different ways this for next year with when you start the year, uh, we start before Labor Day, but, uh, the, the dates are a little, uh, unique because we thought it's not going to be too late in the human term, it was the leap year that's coming up. So it causes a little bit of a little problematic, but yeah, but I think we've been able to work it again. You think, but it's, it's kind of reasonable that happens.
Right, I mean, it's just, it's one day over four years. Yeah, it's like we had a day song, you know.
Yeah, and that's happened, yeah, we do the following, but, uh, but we, I think we've got it, you know, worked out, it just came back, we said, um, to support the piece, and we're ready to use, um, soon as later. So, yeah, we'll be on that piece. Um, we have just about finalized, had negotiations, had our last meeting with, uh, with, but today, so we'll be going, um, they ratified, uh, my last, I could add this forward for all of you, um, to approve. And then, uh, just want to add, you know, this, great seeing being, you know, being here the last nine years and he's been part of the swim program and I have my daughters watching him grow up has really just been a treat. He is, he's a really interesting, uh, student, he's done a couple of jobs. It is growth, so just, I don't know, puts a smile on my face watching him grow the last nine years, I know, so he did a good job. That's it, that's all I have.
I really don't have much for you tonight. The only thing I'll share is that I, my, my curriculum meeting is starting, first one this week. Um, focus of the curriculum leaders this year will be around, um, taking what we developed in the way of our internal curriculum and, um, publishing, um, curriculum that will be posted on our website for public consumption. That's a part of the new legislation. So, um, putting, you know, a, a lot of our, what we had developed internally is really for teachers, so without scaling back on what's in our implementation guides and, um, you know, finalizing those, uh, public-based curriculum that we have next year. Start that on Thursday. I suspect that will take us probably, um, months to complete. Uh, so my, it is my goal this year to have, uh, whatever we have developed internally to be posted, uh, externally.
And do you have to, she said, July, when do you have to, like, happen?
Uh, cool, I have to check the legislation. I'm not sure when the date comes, but I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say by July one, twenty twenty-four. Because that's usually when those who attend, uh, go and do, yeah. I mean, we have, um, right now posted links that anchor back into standards, which that's all of our curriculum aligns with standards, but it's not our and so, um, we've done, as you know, from my updates, it's been here, we've been in the curriculum work internally, and really come up with, and it's time to, um, put that up. So there is, uh, So there is, uh, they scheduled a meeting for member orientation, December sixth, that was in Harper South, it's in Rockville. So if there's going to be any more members, that they should, that we're annual, we said she got a lot out of that. And she gets it out on December sixth. Um, kid convention end of November seventeen or eighteen. Um, they are planning and, um. And I'm trying to remember the phrase another. The superintendent's assistant and assistant superintendent's assistants, like a conference or that they can learn health board events. Um, which generalize stuff in gender building, um, they haven't put out a thing yet, that is, um, so I don't know if your sisters would like to attend that. Maybe that would be great, um, we had a, second, we had a board of directors meeting on the thirteenth. Um, which we had, she took her first there. Um, and she said that the state board of education has updated their website, they have added their five year plan to it. And there is a link to a grant dashboard, um, grants that are out there, grants that have been granted, whether they're actually being used. Um, by their districts, um, so that's a little bit of that that got put out there as well, too, so. That is all I have.
Okay, uh, I close committee reports and moving on to board comment.
So I happened to be in the paint the last week and I was at a school where they have this Yale. Which I kind of, well, it caught my eye, it's, I remember Yale's entering AI, which is a productive computer science force. They're using AI as tutors. So when students are having a hard time, you know, something, and the media courses, the instructor has set up a bar, I have no idea how AI works. Um, where the kids can go and ask a question about how to build in their platform, so if anybody wants to, it was actually really interesting, if anybody wants to read it. It's pretty cool, um, and then the out of the garden as well is Saturday, if anybody would love. It's just too much, because we book our vendors, they're here in advance, and trying to find a date open in their calendars this. Because right now it is not scheduled, so that's our huge fundraiser for the year and it's not. It's just too hard to get everybody's schedules coming, so. It's a bummer, it's sad, and the horn pole has been rescheduled after working. Which is on, that's for the deal. Again, no poor hall, which is, uh, no poster fest, so that was.
Yes, yeah, that's why I'm, uh, just a reminder that this Saturday, September thirty, is going to be can't take heritage day. Uh, and my books, uh, one month before, so there's going to be some family activities, so, uh, you know, opportunities to hear more about it. Five, uh, originally had a sense of this area, so this is the third year that we have anyone's. To, with, um, event boards that give for a practice.
A question is. Uh, again, that's new actions, um, in tonight's room, but, um. Theater trips, we have, um, I mean, I have a huge department in that. Generally, we see. Do you make, or, how do we?
I don't, I mean, like, you understand if a teacher brings forward a new proposal to go overseas.
Um, not overseas, but out of state.
Out of state, um, safety factors, enjoy it if they're run by a company, uh, that's a big company. I think at least, why don't we know about?
Yeah. It's around the communication.
Well, you see, though, we only see the ones that go out of the country, because I, I think the ones that go out of state, so I never read this whole board. That's probably what you don't receive.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's very opportunistic here, a little bit of, you know, you have lost, and you have trips and then change, and things change and. Just to hear a little bit about them, you know, the.
Yeah, uh, yeah. So a few there. There aren't many that go out anymore.
At state, but middle school, high school, high school.
I was actually thinking about state or high school, but, um. But yeah, I mean, I think that's what I was.
Theater trips.
Yeah, you know, there's like creative things that you've done, that have been paused, now we're trying to bring things back, you know, we're. For the role doesn't follow that gas rate, so, you know, there are considerations in that, it's essentially just. That was, that was one, hoping to find the old straight level where we should, if it is bright orange shirt and, and supplemental, it's, it's still. It's a little unreleased or sometimes, but, um, we've made one, so I didn't.
But yeah, we can, we can look at.
Well, I'm just not ready to start with anything, but, um, the, we've done. I mean, I don't know, we're ready.
That's fine, that's fine, we could try and fully go.
Oh, that would be.
Not gonna be then. You don't do now.
Words bring that Friday update.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, that's, that's the. But yeah. So we can talk, see if they say, triangle back.
There's a bunch in the spring to go to Six Flags. When you sit down and you have seen. One, we're using theater, physics, athletics, uh, not very, we don't have very many. I already would want it.
Yeah.
It was still free, like breakfast. Okay, so just breakfast, just for. Okay, so they are responsible for their life.
Sure.
And then, uh, free lunches are free and then reduced lunches are free as well. Because they state, soon as they get reduced. Free and reduce the reduce. And for the reduce, if, you know, federal government's picking up to bring into reduce, I think Connecticut, Spain, that's. However, that one, that last, Connecticut, uh, the reduced lunches. For students, it's also free to them.
It's curious.
Total state, state, state.
No, this just came up while I was around, I was kind of. Educators and, uh, I'm getting discussion about who, and what different states.
If you want to talk to Chris or if you can present.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, you can fill in exactly.
Question, um, as I've been getting all my views of our organization, and we need presentations tonight. And all the discussion about that, we've been, and I, can you have someone come to me? And talk with us about what's.
Still had shared some resources, our team is on it, I'm bringing presentations to, to different levels, we have, but I already reached out to the building principals. To find time in the faculty meetings to share resources, but I could just share with you a brief overview of what our plan is for this year, which is to. Um, provide a overview to staff around what it's, how does it work? And how can it be useful for us as educators to start? Then we'll bring to the tech committee, um, you know, sort of problem of practice with regards to how do we develop a set of, um, expectations for students? And how does that communicate communicated out to them, um, and in what format? That what curricular implications so that have K twelve orderly across our tech departments. Uh, and from there we'll develop an actual thing moving forward for our students, I suspect we probably at some point will be, um, crossing a policy, uh, conversation. Around some of this, uh, we're not quite there yet, it's like changing every second, but. There are some really, really beneficial resources for teachers that they could be using right this moment, so that is sort of on what's right in front of us. We're trying to get out into staff sooner than. Yeah, and then I think what will be beneficial is maybe we have that presentation come to the board one night to give you a review of what's been told, you know, what's been brought to our staff. Uh, to talk and play in English. Yeah. It's actually, it's.
Yeah. It's good to make your hits, but not because of difficulty, but just how for automation.
And maybe the expectations can include a little demo too, because sometimes it comes.
Oh, yeah.
They'll get into it, yeah, and, you know, feeding it different things, even trying, thinking we're going to get the same result, but. How will you handle the process? Yeah, I already read it, it'd be much easier for right away, you can prompt it again. So I'm looking forward to bringing that to you, it's, it can work, yeah. So one of the questions I just thought of, our students, like, would it call, allowed to come and speak at the beginning of the meeting if they have a question about something? Or do you not to be in a job, this is not, now they're board meeting, not our board meeting.
Yes, you speak before. Although the favorites say aye. Oh, you just say.